All right, ready?
All set?
Yep.
Okay, it's seven PM, July ninth, twenty twenty four, in City Hall, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Time to call the city of Torrington and Inland Wetlands Commission to Order. Serving on this evening are members Christine Altman, Adrian Barbe, Bill Pagani, Jay Bate, also present is Nate Artie Cyrus, Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer and Assistant City Planner. Next is minutes for approval for the June eleventh, twenty twenty four, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the June eleventh, twenty twenty four, regular meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You, Christine? Christine, okay. Okay, motion carries. Next is all business. Hmm, applicant Dean Benton. Location nine one nine Gerdat Road, Assessor Map two thirty-two, block zero zero five, lot zero one nine. Activity Restoration of Wetlands and Adjust Adjacent Upland Buffer.
So, uh, the applicant isn't here, um, for this final meeting, uh, as a review. His wetland scientist came in for an initial pre-application meeting. Prior to that, this was an enforcement action, uh, where he cleared about an acre of property adjacent to, uh, a known wetland, a pond. Um, and he hired Ian Cole, uh, produced this wetlands report. Wetlands Commission added a couple of conditions to this, uh, including the restoration seed along the bank of the stream here where there would be prescribed plantings, forty-five shoreline stabilization plantings. Um, as an update, pro- uh, right after the last meeting, I visited the site and noted that all the erosion and sediment controls noted, um, that had been previously installed were removed. Um, Dean had thought that, you know, the site was dry and they didn't need to be there anymore and um, I notified him that he would need to have those up until the site had been stabilized. So he did put back up the silt fence in the location that it's shown here on the map. Um, he's was yet to install the, um, right here is supposed to be a, uh, wood chip berm to prevent, you know, materials from going into the pond, so I'll continue to follow up with him on that. Um, he said he had gotten the wood chipper and he planned on doing that around now, so, uh, next week I'll stop by and, and, and make sure that that control is in. Um, another piece, I just want to clarify for the record. The wetland scientist said that, um, had made a point to say that this silt fence area here, everything to the right of it would be a lawn area. Um, this is a pretty steep slope down to the pond. Everything to the left was going to be left and to, to naturally revegetate all the way down to the pond. Um, when I spoke to Dean, he indicated that that's not what he was planning on doing. Uh, he wanted to do a sixty-five foot buffer from the pond and try to restore as much of it to lawn above there as physically possible. It gets pretty stony, so I think based on his amount of effort, but he said at a minimum he would do a sixty-five foot buffer that would just naturally revegetate in addition to his shoreline plantings prescribed in this plan. Um, and in my opinion, that's a reasonable, uh, sort of buffer area, given the commission's Upland Review Area jurisdiction is a hundred feet. Um, but, you know, that's what
I'd only go to a hundred.
He wanted, I, I wanted to make sure that he was proposing to you for a decision, what he was going to do, so that we didn't immediately have to snap to enforcement when it wasn't being, um, administered. Um, you know, the commission has jurisdiction to, you know, to impose a buffer greater than what he said or the original buffer. Um, but, um, he, he is proposing sixty-five feet from the pond uh, as an area of, you know, to, to, to leave fallow and to naturally revegetate.
Does he remove the, uh, tree, uh, the stumps that were there or actually a tree?
Yeah, so pretty much, so the whole site has been stumped.
Okay.
This area above has been, all the stones have been grubbed out and removed as well. Down here, there's a lot more stone, um, and so they did remove the stumps, but they kind of didn't fully grade it, they just smoothed it out again, but the stones are still there and would, there's quite a few of them, so it will probably be challenging for him to restore, um, lawn down to, to even that sixty-five foot area.
There's no intention to remove the stone then.
Uh, in big stones, like you need a machine to move them?
Yeah, yeah, reasonably to do it at, at, you know, for the nu- number of stones. They're not giant boulders, but, you know, a few feet across each, you know?
Okay, so they're
Well, this is a violation, right?
What?
Violation.
Correct.
I, I'm not really in favor of him going sixty-five feet.
Hmm.
I'm saying go a hundred feet.
Hmm.
Because that's what the regulation says.
Hmm.
You know, it's supposed to be a hundred feet from a water course. So letting him go sixty-five just kind of gives other people the same, well, you, you know, he went sixty-five and you're making me go a hundred or whatever.
Hmm.
I'd rather have him go a hundred feet.
Nate, can you indicate where that sixty-five foot line is approximately?
Sure, I'll zoom in on this plan. Can you see the plan, Christine?
I can, thank you.
Yeah, so it was to somewhere, you can see this kind of pile over here. Uh, it, it kind of is right along here. So the hundred foot Upland Review Area line was noted by the wetland scientist, a little bit more than halfway between the, the shore and the Upland Review Area, so right about here.
Okay. I, I would agree that it should be a hundred feet at least.
I'd like to see him follow that hundred degree, that hundred foot Upland.
Yeah, if I recall, that was this
It's already flagged.
Yeah.
He can, he can go down to those flags.
Right, it would be a hundred feet, uh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that he flagged it in the woods because the area of interest, he basically, the wetland scientist showed that the cleared area wasn't wetlands until you got right immediately to adjacent to the pond. Except for this little snippet here, I didn't know any orange flagging on site, but at the very least, you could, he could come up with a reasonable approximation using this map alone.
I mean, if there was some real reason why he had to stay at sixty-five, I mean, I would entertain that, but I don't really see why he can't go a hun- seeing it is a violation, it's not like he's doing anybody
Yeah, i- i- if I recall, the original intention was for line of sight view of the pond.
Correct.
Wasn't to create more lawn space.
Yeah. Hmm. Would, to be clear, when conditioning the permit, um, would it, would there be any maintenance of that area allowed, or would it be, ha- would they have to come back to the commission for a permit for further clearing in that area?
If you stick by the hundreds
I mean, he could clear the hundred foot if he, as long as he goes along that line.
Yeah.
I mean, from the hundred foot back, but
But I mean, as far as the maintenance of that hundred foot buffer area, that is to be completely untouched unless another permit is issued?
Yeah, I would think that would, that, he's gonna let that go just natural, right?
That, that was what his, his wetland scientist had indicated.
That, in fact, is what they're gonna do, then I'd say let it go natural, a hundred feet rather than sixty-five.
I, I agree with that as well.
Okay. Right.
But it's not cleared where the hundred foot line goes up. But it's not, yeah, that area, that's not cleared in there, or it is cleared?
It's all cleared, the whole area within this box that's three hundred and thirty feet long and a hundred fifty wide. That whole area was cleared, it's about a little over an acre.
Does that slope to the center from, from that le- left side, does that slope towards the center, or is it all sloping towards the pond?
It all slopes toward the pond, it somewhat benches out right around here where the rocks start, so it's pretty steep up into here.
Yeah.
And then it kind of benches out and it's pretty, pretty flat, uh, with a slight grade toward the pond through this hole.
So is that, you said it wasn't flagged in the woods, but there's no woods? Or he didn't?
Well, I mean, in this area to the south.
Okay, I don't, okay.
Right, so that's where the, where he, where the
To the south, that's just Upland Review.
Hmm, so the pond here is wetlands and PFO stands per- for Pollustrian Forested, which is a forested wetland. So this, this area is wetlands.
Okay.
Um, and the Upland Review Area, you can see it kind of matches this jog and
Did go across the hundred foot straight down, he's still gonna maintain, I don't know, how far to that?
Uh
PFO area.
Uh, so wait, so you're asking
Area, that would be seventy-five feet?
Uh, yes, right, exactly, he's showing a hundred foot for the whole thing, but technically our regulations, the pond would be a hundred and the PFO would be seventy-five.
Okay, so I guess, in my mind, if, if he, if that's flagged, it would be nice for him to stay, you know, on the flags, but if it's not flagged and he went across the hundred foot, I guess I could, I could take that.
Yeah, I could take that too.
Okay.
How about you, Christine?
I'm on a delay, sounds good, that sounds good to me.
Okay.
Um, the other conditions that I mentioned in, um, in my memo when reviewing this was the, um, addition of signs by the water indicating that this is a regulated area. Um, I would just put them in front of the plantings to dissuade further, uh, you know, owners after that. Um, we don't have, we have this wetland mapping here, but I think since it's not flagged, it's difficult to, to map the PFO area.
Well, that, below the hundred foot, is there anything grown in there now, or is that just dirt?
No, it would have to be put on stakes. Um, so I did a recommendation to be decided, we have standards that are something like fifty feet or every, uh, turn, every wetlands flag to have that done, um, and we have the, we have the signs available there. A dollar twenty-five, because we bought them in bulk so that we could sell them at cost to applicants. Um, and then the other, the other, uh, suggested condition, um, would be to make it a two-year permit, which is what I do for all restoration like type things, just because if not, he'd get five years to do the work.
But the wetlands, um, I guess the, the guy who's coming up with the plantings.
Hmm.
Um, so there are no, he's just gonna let everything grow natural, so he's not gonna put any planting?
No, he has a list.
So the plan states forty-five shoreline plantings, fifteen high bush blueberry, fifteen mountain laurel and fifteen winter berry. He started those plantings.
Okay, so that's in that hundred foot?
That's immediately adjacent to the shoreline.
Yeah.
So he almost, he didn't show it, but it's basically in cluster, I think he described
Okay.
in clusters, here, let me find exactly how he specked this out. Um, forty-five, three to four foot tall stock and clumps along the shoreline, because there's a lot of boulders, so he, you know, it's difficult to do a linear. Um, and then, you know, he recommended a source. So Mr. Benton had actually already insta- started installing some mountain laurel there, but it's a little late in the season and some of them have already died back, so he's gonna have to, you know, go, he's gonna have to start again in the fall.
Okay.
Just refresh my memory, who, who owns the pond?
So the pond, this map shows it pretty well, so the, this
Also, that's his property line that we're looking at right here?
Yep, this is his property line here, so there's a small sliver over by this property owner.
All right.
And then the rest, this is another larger property for sale, so there's three owners.
So, okay, so i- i- any, I, I mean, if he had lawn going all the way up there and you had, uh, chemicals going into the pond, I mean, he's only endangering himself.
Yeah, I mean, so the, I guess the idea would be that, uh, a, a buffer to that planting, you know, to that area would intercept
Yeah.
chemical fertilizers to some degree.
That hundred foot is a good buffer for that.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and it, like I was stating before, I wish there was grades on this plan. It basically benches off just underneath the, the soil and erosion control.
Yeah.
So over here, it gets, it's like really steep here and then it flattens out, so some vegetation in there, even, you know, eventually it'll become woody, that'll intercept a lot of whatever whoever runs off.
So there, there is some stuff starting to grow in that area now? Cause he's only gonna see the top portion, right?
Correct, basically everything outside of that buffer, as far down as he can go with the lawn n- now to that hundred foot buffer, he's gonna try, and if he can't do it, he's just gonna, he'll make the buffer bigger if anything, if it's, if it's just too much of a pain for him to mow between rocks and
Okay.
you know, all that.
That sounds good.
Hmm.
Is that it, as far as conditions and stuff?
That's, that's, that's all I had.
Okay, can I have motion? Were you gonna talk?
I was gonna sneeze.
Oh.
Uh, yeah, I, um, I, um, if I do this, how do I propose a motion to, you know, that we want a hundred foot buffer?
Well, you gotta, just to say, uh, like in this one, I'd say, um, make a motion to grant Dean Benton, nine one nine Gerdat Road, Assessor Map two thirty-two, block zero zero five, lot zero one nine. Um, Restoration of Wetlands and Adjacent Buffer, Buffer. Yep, the permit.
Oh, okay.
A- a- and, and in addition, the conditions
The conditions would be the hundred foot setback would be where he could plant his seeds up to, his grass up to, right?
Hmm, and, and then the two-year permit and the signs as well?
Yes.
So that means every two years he has to get a new permit?
Correct.
The hope is that he's restored it in two years.
Yeah, right, but by two years, if he has not finished the work, you're, you're in all your rights to not grant him an additional permit and switch to enforcement.
Can we do it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion to, uh, to accept the
That to grant.
Uh, to grant Dean Benton, applicant nine one nine Gerdat Road, Assessor Map two thirty-two, block zero zero five, lot zero one nine. Permission for the restoration of wetlands and adjacent upland buffer, assuming that there is a hundred foot URA position, uh, as shown on the, uh, proposal. And further that this be a two-year, uh, approval subject to, um, uh, two-year approval for restoration, subject to, uh, re-permitting after the two-year period.
Yeah, the condition is that he can't plant seed below the hundred URA line.
Okay. Hmm. And the addition of signs.
Including no seed planting below the hundred foot URA line towards the pond.
Okay, can I have a second?
Yes. Do you want to put the signs in there?
I want to put the signs in it too?
If everyone's in agreement, then
Yeah.
Yeah.
With stipulation to put signs also.
Also included
Sorry?
Also included is a stipulation that signs be noted and marked in the position, uh, for the hundred foot line.
I'll second.
Do I have a second?
You have a second, Christine seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adrian?
I said aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. All right, next. Applicant Audrey Curtis, location four ninety-four Newfield Road and four forty-six Newfield Road. Assessor Maps two thirty-three dash slash zero zero three slash zero zero four and two thirty-three slash zero zero three slash zero zero five. Activity is Restoration of Animal Bedding Dump within an adjacent within and adjacent to wetlands.
So this is another, um, this is another, uh, permit application that arose from a enforcement action. Uh, this started with a show cause hearing with Mr. Paul Church, um, and Audrey Curtis regarding, uh, the dumping of organic material in and around a wetland on the neighboring property. Um, that order was upheld and required the app, the, uh, the defendant to, um, to apply for a permit from Inland Wetlands Commission. Um, the, the submitted permit was, I'm just gonna share it real quick, um, can you see that, Christine?
Yep.
So it was simply to, um, remove the pile that's existing there, um, outside of the hundred foot regulated area, um, no, um, uh, no restoration would be required other than, you know, making sure that it was graded in a stable way, um, uh, but letting it naturally reseed. Okay. Um, so again, that this, this application was accepted, it wasn't deemed necessary to have a public hearing or considered it a significant activity. So the task is to condition this permit and, um, make a decision on whether or not to approve it for the applicant.
Yeah, I think we're pretty much set on getting that removed and we're gonna remove it? And we have a time?
Yes.
Uh, I think it was three months.
It's got, I thought it's two years to complete the whole thing.
So it, the permit has to be, it can't, you can't have a permit less in length than two years, but you can make a condition that they, you know, do have certain milestones completed within that, so, you know, movement of material out of that area can be, you could put a timeframe on that.
So could, could we ask that they, uh, submit a, uh, like a six-month type photograph, picture, or presentation as to what they've done, what they've accomplished?
You can go up and take a look at it.
Yeah, I could, I could go my
You would be
Yeah, I would recommend having me go to confirm rather than having him self attest to completing the work. Um, but yeah, that's, uh, um, yeah, he's asking for the permit to, to do this and I can, and that could definitely be a condition, just that, you know, hmm, it's any permit I'll have to go and sign off on eventually anyway to make sure they're complying, we, we periodically monitor.
I wish they were here, because we could ask them how long they think it's gonna take.
Yeah, and they've been at other ones, and I did speak to Audrey last week and reminded her of the date of this, so, um, I'm not sure if something came up, but
Well, they were gonna get a piece of power equipment, which was gonna make it go faster.
I would think they'd get it done within a few days if they had the
What they had, that, that was their plan, I
Yeah, you're supposed to get, you know, like
Well, why don't we go for like six months, and if there's an issue, we can come back to us.
Yeah, so six months would be
I'd like to see it done before winter.
Yeah, with two
I mean, they're not gonna get anything accomplished after a certain amount of time, so to me, I would rather just set a deadline uh, that, you know, for, for this season, you, I don't know, maybe the end of October.
Number first.
October, yeah, November first.
November first.
Yeah.
And you can kind of get feedback from them. They know they'll probably have some, might have an issue with that, I don't know.
This, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, um, they, you know, you had made that clear that a, about three-month timeline, so there, it wouldn't be a surprise to them.
Okay.
Um, the other things I, I brought up to consider would be potential erosion control or something to, to prevent them from making more of a mess of it while they're working down there.
Yeah.
I mean, I picture a silt fence maybe not doing too much, but I, I didn't know if the commission had any other ideas, I mean
The only other thing I'm thinking they could do was stakes hay bales.
I, I was thinking the same thing.
It would, it would be a little bit better and it wouldn't have to take them out.
They could just let it decompose there.
That might be, they might have access to hay, you know, hay bales, seeing as, it must have been, I don't know what they feed pigs, but I don't know if they use hay for bedding or what, but they might have access to hay bales and
So, so I would say for clarity here, installation of staked hay bales at the toe of the slope.
I think you stated that we're using sawdust, sawd- woodchips.
Yeah, it could be.
For the bedding and, and, but that, that would be for bedding, they would, I, I don't know, I don't know that pigs eat hay, I think it might be it's more like, just like compost.
Straw bale, right? As opposed to hay?
Right, right, straw would be preferred.
Yeah.
Um
Yeah, because you wouldn't, you don't want it seeding.
Um, so, yeah, so installation of staked straw bales at, uh, the toe of slope, um, to be, to be removed or left?
And leave it, I would
If it's straw, they can leave it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually kind of wonder if they can get it out, um, you know, if they get all of the material out, they could actually spread the straw lightly and maybe, um, prevent, prevent, you know, like the invasives coming in right away.
Right, okay, so, yeah, I'll
How can we get these twelve points that you have over to them, so they understand?
So those are the standard conditions for all of our permits, so they'll go, so you'll see in the memo, um, all those points are standard conditions, and then I, I usually will request adding a couple in there. Um, so he will receive a copy of all those conditions with
Alright.
with their permit. Um, at the very end of that, so I, I, I probably gave it a two-year time, I recommended a two-year timeline.
Yeah.
If you have it in front of you, what are the last two conditions?
The last two are erosion and sedimentation, set, sedimentation controls are installed and inspected prior to the start of construction. Their surveyed wetland boundary shall be posted with metal markers with design and spacing to be approved by the Wetlands Commission.
So that's my recommended, I mean, the, 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 um, sediment erosion control is a standard condition, but, uh, I basically, for all these, I try to have these markers installed just to, to dissuade future, um, dumping. I think in this case, one or two, just at the top of the slope, would accomplish the purpose.
Okay.
So in, in this case, if, if the commission is okay with these, then it would be the, uh, uh, an approval with additional conditions being the installation of staked straw bales at the toe of the slope and, um, and placement of signs, um,
At the top.
You know, yeah, at the top of the slope, at the discretion of the Inland Wetlands agent.
Okay.
Hey, can I have motion?
I move that we grant the permit for Audrey Curtis, four ninety-four Newfield Road and four forty-six Newfield Road. Assessor Map two thirty-three slash zero zero three slash zero zero four and two thirty-three slash zero zero three slash zero zero five for Restoration of Animal Bedding Dump within and adjacent to the wetlands, with the conditions that sedimentation and erosion control is implemented using staked straw bales at the bottom of the slope and that, um, wetlands signs go in at the top of the slope.
I'm sorry, and then, and then that this would be a two-year permit?
Uh, two-year permit with the, um, removal of the material being completed by November first.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Who say, I'm sorry, who seconded that motion?
Yo.
Okay.
Okay, there's no new business, next is the staff report?
Um, one other, one other bit relates, somewhat related to this, uh, four ninety-four Newfield Road. The property owner, um, uh, so not Audrey Curtis of the churches, the property owner themselves, they want to remove two trees, one of them is a dying ash tree, one of them is a chair of rather large cherry tree that's covered with bittersweet right now and is leaning. Um, basically, both of these are leaning toward vehicles owned by, um, the church, Mr. Church and, and Audrey Curtis. Um, they would like to remove those, it's questionable whether those are in or outside of the wetland, they're kind of on the edge there. Um, I, in the past, Jeremy has said that we've issued agent permits for the removal of one or two trees in kind of questionable wetland areas without approval by the entire commission. Um, if the commission members are okay with this, I can go ahead and issue that permit to be overseen by myself. Um, basically, just to, yeah, as an agent permit, I would administratively do it and then I would monitor their progress, but it's gonna be in exactly this area, just kind of maybe twenty-five feet from where this site is.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
That's good.
I'll relay that to the property owner.
Okay. Okay, next is staff report, enforcement report?
Um, I did, I didn't have this on the agenda, but two forty-two Clear View Ave, um, that was a permit that was a That was a permit that was approved at the last meeting. This was for a project that was, it was a, an area, a channel that was like a historic river channel that now was just overflow, basically. They, they've rock lined the entire thing and they're expected to be complete with all this work on Monday. We had the city engineer come out with myself and we, because the, the permit was limited in its scope. There were some steep areas that concerned the, uh, the city engineer, so that we asked that they did a, a two to one slope along the entire thing per DOT, CT DOT guidelines for a channel like this, and they complied with that. They did have to move the channel a little bit more than the permit application had stated, mostly because the entire area had been undermined. You couldn't see in the photos, but once you start, they started pulling material out to prepare it for rock lining, the whole slope collapsed. So they had to push it back a little bit further, but it was clear that that wasn't, you know, not purposeful and, and it was stable. So that's the status on that. So they should be finishing that up soon. I did relay a secondary motion that the commission made regarding public works, um, doing improvements on Clearview. I can read a comment from Paul Kunzen, city engineer. He basically, well, I don't have it in front of me, but he basically, he received that comment. He said that they're working on, on doing those improvements. You know, for the most part, he said the street is operating, the catch basin system is operating correctly, but there was a, the major issue being a lip that didn't exist on the driveway that was allowing all the water to come into the driveway. So the city is committed to building up that lip to force water into the catch basins and have it operate, you know, as it should be.
Good.
Good.
Other things on the enforcement report, 2904 Winstead Road, this is the Frigail property. Again, a long time, I, we had issued, I issued a cease and desist order. The commission upheld this. I met with their engineer, Bill Colby, does a lot of work in the city. He received our comments and basically dropped off the map for a while. We were able to secure a meeting with him this Friday where we're gonna talk about a number of projects, but this is one of them. So there is movement on trying to get that resolved and have them submit a detailed plan on how they're gonna finish it. He did, if, if you're at all familiar with this, there's a bridge that was constructed in the floodway. He indicated to me over the phone that, you know, he was never gonna remove that bridge. And I told him, well, we'll make sure the plan's compliant no matter what. So we'll see what happens when that comes, comes about. 87 Eagle Ridge, this was another, this was another permit that was issued in response to a violation for a single family home lot. Lot was completely cleared after inland wetlands authorized a permit for, for more limited clearing for the home construction. After years, the home has been built, the area was restored, the last bit was making sure that the landscaping and the grass took. The good news is that the, the landscaping was maintained by the new property owner. The bad news is the applicant seeded it with grass instead of the restoration mix, though he insisted otherwise. I went today, I, I asked the homeowner to let it grow for about a month so I could see if I could identify any plants. It was all grass with some smart weed and some ragweed mixed in there. So clearly that is not acceptable. So the property owner seemed uh, like they were gonna just mow in that area regardless of what inland wetlands had said, which was to let it return to a natural state. But their thinking on that may have changed. So I have to reach out to them and basically, you know, require that the, that the home builder restore that area per the plans, which I'll, we'll see how that goes. We have a $2,000 bond for that work that we can hold over them, but we'll see. So I'll, I'll keep everyone posted. This thing just won't go away in my world. The final thing, the final enforcement issue is 335 Winstead Road. This is the, the item that I had sent you all in your packets. A draft forbearance agreement drafted by our corporation council. I can share that with everyone. Give me a second and I'll go over the terms and conditions. The task for the commission is to determine whether or not you feel that this is an acceptable agreement for Jay to sign and pass a motion stating whether or not it is. I'll go over it. The, the whereas clauses are just basically talking about the enforcement history of this property, which is lengthy and, you know, open ended. But it, the last, the last piece of it was that there was, there was legal action dated back to 2009 or even 2013. That was the, when, when the inland wetlands permit, which had been revoked, was reinstated by the commission with an expiration date of November 18th, 2023. November 18th, 2023 came upon us last year. The applicant resubmitted the exact same application that they had, that they had proposed originally as a renewal, which would be fine, except for the fact that they had filled about three acres of wetlands since that last survey. So we, you know, I had recommended to this commission to deny it and to begin enforcement. After that, we met with the applicant. He has a plan to transfer this property ideally to PAC Group, which is a, you know, a major developer in the community to do industrial park type use there, which is permitted by the zoning. Right now it's a material recycling yard, which means that AJK, the mine brings material that's not, you know, suitable for sale and further processes it into smaller gravel or other things for sale. So it's essentially a mine use right now, though where, where materials are being processed. So anyway, this agreement is basically setting up the terms for the property to change hands. I think our land use department considered the changing of hands from AJK to another more reputable type business is probably a benefit to the wetlands over time. It would be all, you know, kind of large indoor industrial facilities versus a sprawling, rock crushing operation. But there would have to be certain conditions because this agreement would basically allow them to continue their activity to some degree without any permit from inland wetlands until, you know, until the new activity was being proposed. So I'll go over the conditions of this agreement. As was originally stated, number one, AJK shall stop not bring new material into the property. Number two, any material remaining on the property shall be processed and removed from the property no later than September 1st, 2025. That's a pretty major task. Any restoration would require a lot of material to be moved off that property in advance of doing any restoration. Stowin or PAC Group shall submit a site plan application no later than September 1st, 2025, which site plan must be approved by all necessary boards and commissions. That would include wetlands prior to the conveyance of premises from AJK to PAC. Should AJK and PAC decide not to go forward with the sale and purchase of the agreements, AJK or Stowin shall submit a restoration plan no later than September 1st, 2025. All work proposed to be performed in the filled wetlands area as shown on the restoration plan must be completed or bonded no later than December 31st, 2025. Work on the premises, whether in accordance with the site plan or approved restoration plan must commence no later than December 31st. And should any of this, you know, be violated, then the agreement would be null and void. And the city will forbear further enforcement against inland wetlands or planning and zoning violations. You know, provided that the parties agree to this, this, this agreement. So there's kind of two things going on at once. There's inland wetlands approval for this, but it's also never been permitted as a mine officially, even though that's what it meets in our regulations because of the materials processing. So they don't have a planning and zoning approval and they need that as well. So this agreement would forbear both inland wetlands and planning and zoning. At the last planning and zoning meeting, they seemed keen not to accept this agreement as is. And they made a note, I just wanna bring this up, I had it right in front of me. The specific conditions that they required were that there be regular inspections that were, would be, you know, noted in this agreement where, you know, myself and other staff could enter the property to ensure compliance with the agreement. They also indicated that they thought that the, this September 1st 2025 deadline was too long for any of this and they required, they would require a September, what, what's the day I had on here? September 1st deadline for them to do an ASBIL of the entire property as it exists today and a restoration plan to be submitted by this September. That'd be a really, really fast turnaround, but that's what they would want to have in hand. Also, they wanted to make sure, it says AJK shall not bring any new material. They said they, no one should bring any material onto the site and not to spell out AJK specifically. So the question is, you know, do you, do you want to not accept the agreement? Do you want to accept it with further conditions? Or you think that these conditions in addition to the planning and zoning conditions are satisfactory in your mind?
Yeah, I kind of like the planning and zoning commissions to tighten it up a little bit. But the not bringing anything onto the property is really the best part because they have a lot of material there. It's gonna take them a while to get it off of there. But if they don't bring anything in, it really isn't gonna affect us too much unless they start moving it around.
Right, let me, I'm gonna share this map.
Just a one question there. Does, does AJK have, they have to clear this up before PAC can buy this property or not? That they get out of doing their portion of cleanup?
Right, well, it would be between them and PAC to determine who did the clean, did the restoration. This is basically, yeah, you're asking can they, can AJK convey the property without any of this work being done without any agreement?
Right.
Uh, it, there would be significant title issues. I guess if they were doing it with no financing, maybe that would be possible, but like if there's any kind of financing, you know, this is on, I mean, it's on the land record, though. Yeah, they would, they would, any, any title company would flag this as a pretty big problem.
Alright, so it's.
So you can see here, this is the mapped wetlands that they provided at that November 23rd meeting that they were proposing. And it included operations where you can see all the stuff going on here. That wasn't shown at all. It was basically, they resubmitted a map from 1990 that didn't reflect any of the conditions on the site for reapproval when this is what existed on the site. And I can kind of time step us backwards a little bit. This is this April, what's existing on the site. So it starts to clear up around now. What, this is 2018? And this is probably looking a little bit more similar to when the commission was dealing with it. They started by just storing equipment here.
Yeah.
But prior to that, there was this, this ATV track that was permitted. But the only reason why we're enforcing this is because this was the wetlands mapping that they submitted to us. And so if this is what they're saying the wetlands are, PAC Group remapped it and showed the wetlands all up here because they've been filled. Right, that's the difference between the new wetlands mapping and this one shows the area that they would need to restore. In addition, this area is within a deep natural diversity database record. So there's a rare fish that lives in this part of the Still River. And so, you know, any of their future planning is gonna be subject to some deep conditions probably as well because of that fish in this wetland that clearly is directly connected to the Still River there. So it's a complicated scenario.
It is.
Can we see the 2024 one again?
If I can, can you all see, Christine, can you see the feasibility study on the screen?
Yep.
Okay, this is the last piece I'll show you just to help with your consideration. This was submitted last year. You can see June 23rd, 2023. This shows the new extent of the wetlands that was done by SLR. So this blue line is where the wetlands exist now. And the old survey showed it basically right here in all this, all the area being filled. See. Just wanna get to the plan that they, they're proposing. So they would want to work within this entire area, including a building within that area of filled wetlands, which we told them right off the bat that that was probably gonna be a nonstarter. But they were also, we're talking about potentially filling in one of these large ponds that was a remnant of a mining, a mine, an old mine pit. They said that they would, you know, because it's old that they would, you know, hope that the commission would allow them to reclaim that former mine area that's now wetlands to put a building here and that they would, it's also in the hundred year floodplain, so they have to deal with compensatory storage and other floodplain related stuff. But this is just a general concept of what PAC Group would want to do, which it may not even work out if the commission's unwilling at this time to think about filling in a pond to put one of these buildings and not permitting this building within this area of wetlands or former wetlands. So just to share PAC's plan.
So I understand the less desirable stone that fills the wetland. That's what they want to process through the plant that they want to construct. Or what, what happens to that stone?
So in this concept, these would have nothing to do with the stone crushing operations. These would be more like fuel cell or any of those industrial park type facilities.
Oh, so there'd be nothing to do with that. So what were they gonna do with that stone that they have to remove?
That is a, an answer that we don't know that, we don't know the answer to that question.
They weren't gonna move it to another spot in this property.
No, they would have to move it out of the property. There's nowhere they could really conceive, I, I mean, unless they put it in the pond, but.
That was where I was going.
I don't, I mean, that would require, basically, it seems as the agreement exists now, that if they have to restore that area, that there's, I mean, unless they, I guess they could store the fill on another part of the property and see if they get their approval. And then if, if they don't, then they can remove the fill from the property. Yeah, that's, that's kind of a, I mean, as, as the agreement exists now, they would just have to restore this area here to wetlands and and basically cease operation until
Okay.
a new plan came in.
So I assume that area's been quarried out to the point where now.
They weren't digging there, they were.
No, they're just bringing material in the process.
They were just holding the material.
Yeah, they bring material in, process it, it's something they could sell and then.
Okay, it wasn't originally part of the quarry then, the, before they.
No, when they started doing this, this was just like a little storage area used to keep some stuff.
Yeah, I, I see where that is.
It kind of blossomed from there.
And the pri, the prior issues with enforcement revolved around these ponds.
Yeah, this, this area where your, your cursor is now, that line there. Be one of the first times, I think it was the first time we were brought up there because they cleared that back and they parked the equipment there.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't his equipment. He was letting his friend who needed a place to store his equipment. And they put it there. So then they moved everything away and they.
We made them put stones, blocking things off.
Yeah, they put the, the rocks in and stuff like that outside here so that wouldn't get, and it looks like that where they didn't encroach that.
Well, that was in 2016 or 18.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, look at.
So it looks like there's further encroachment into that area here and here.
Yeah, it looks like he's back in there.
Right, so this has all been opened up again. So we're not even addressing this. Yeah, so this is, this is where we're at today.
And, and they think that they could just fill a pond?
That's what PAC Group is, uh, PAC Group is, is hoping that because of the industrial nature of its origins, that they, they would be permitted to do so. They would of course have to go for that approval separately, but that's just something to consider when this is what the plan is, you know. They would of course have to go for that approval separately, but that's just something to consider when this is what the plan is, you know. Let me know if you want me to share. I could share the agreement again, or I could share the proposed plan. Just let me know what you want to see.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the agreement with the additions added by planning and zoning. Tightening in the timing.
It also looks like according to this plan, I'm looking at the SLR feasibility study again, a proposal of, here, let me just share this. A hundred to a hundred fifty foot bridge crossing of the floodway versus right now, I believe it's two culvert, large circular corrugated culverts, metal culverts. That would, that would be a clear improvement to the site based on where it is now to both fish and just blood preparedness. Again, this is all concept.
Yep. I'm fine with the agreement. You know, the, as amended by planning and zoning.
Don't you too?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. So do, does someone want to just pass the motion? You know, authorizing Jay to sign the agreement with the addition of conditions imposed by planning and zoning, something like that.
Uh, and this is for thirty-three fifty Winston Road?
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion of authorizing our chairman Jay to sign the agreement with the amendments by planning and zoning. What else? What else was I supposed to say?
No, that, that sounds fine.
All right. So that's my motion.
Have a second.
I'll second that motion.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I guess last is, oh, we got agent determination.
Yep, just two, um, one, one, four, five, Brandy Hill Road. This is Camp Mo formerly, uh, whatever the other camp was there, the Lark Camp or Camp Mo, it was always Camp Mo. But now, now operated by the Y. They wanted to put a recreational field ringed by wetlands. I met with them out on site. We determined an area that wouldn't require no filling of wetlands and they submitted a permit to do that work. So I issued that permit and then nine thirty-one Torringford Street, that's stop and shop EV charger installation in the upland review area that I, I issued that permit as well.
That's next is adjournment. I have a motion.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So how many EV stations will that give us in the target then?